This conference will now be recorded.
I'd like to call this meeting of the Davenport Public Library Board of Trustees to order. It's Tuesday, October 20. We're meeting in the main library. This is a partially electronic meeting and held as such because a fully in-person meeting is impossible or impractical due to concerns for the health and safety of board members, staff, and the public presented by the COVID-19 and to follow the governor's proclamation directing social distancing. So that's why we're having a partially virtual meeting. To identify who's on the meeting virtually and questions. Amanda Motto?
Here.
Thank you. Frank Cooper?
Here.
Lance?
Here.
Sylvia Roba?
Here.
Tom?
Here.
Lily Motto?
Here.
Joe Heidrichs?
Here.
Malavika Shwakhandi?
Here.
Okay, first item on the agenda, or second item after the roll call is the consent agenda. We have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Thank you Maggie and Malavika. We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Is there a discussion? Hearing and seeing done, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of the motion to approve the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone to vote? Thank you. Next item on the agenda is public with comment. Seeing no one present for the public with comment, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda. Reports of communication. First item. Meeting for us?
Ilia?
Sylvia?
You, thank you.
Thank you. Laura?
Yes, hi. Okay, sorry, I was having a hard time hearing. I figured it was, I was up. Good afternoon, everyone. Nice to be meeting with everyone. Just a couple of updates for the friends. We have officially entered into our, well, you know, we got approval by the city council. I think that you all know that. But then we have officially entered into the quote-unquote "public phase" of our Capitol campaign and sent out letters to our past members and supporters and donors that way. And we've actually started receiving some donations back, so that's really exciting. You know, we actually got a $2,000 gift from a member just recently, or a $2,000 pledge. So that's really exciting news and we hope that we'll see more of those contributions from individuals flow in that way. We're still working on our bylaws update and our guidance update, or governance, excuse me, update. I think that we will have final information on that and hopefully vote and ratify that at our next friends meeting. So still some tweaks there, but I think that's all I have.
Okay, thank you Laura. Next item under communications is committee reports. Finance, anything from finance, Tom?
Well, I was just reviewing the budget recap. We've gone a quarter, a quarter of the way through the year and we spent slightly less than that 24% of the city appropriation, which is good, good budgeting.
Thank you, Tom. Next item under committee reports is personnel. Amanda Craig, anything to report here?
My special report.
Hi, sorry, yes. We'll be doing Amy's evaluation during a closed session today and I think from the last I heard, we'll be voting on that at the next meeting.
Yes. Okay. Thank you Amanda. Next item under committee reports is advocacy. Malavika, anything?
Well, I would like to thank Brittany and Stephanie here at Davenport Public. During September's Library Card Month, they worked with us at St. Ambrose. They created a newsletter because we were wondering if they cannot come on campus to do memberships, how can you do it online? So they worked with us, created a newsletter and helped us through all along. And we shared that newsletter, which had the link and other information of Davenport Public with our students. And the first day itself that was shared with our students, we had around 10-plus memberships that got enrolled. So that was something very nice and so a big thank you to both of them for working with us. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Malavika. Next item on the agenda is director reports. Any things to add or enhance from here?
Yes, I do have a few things. So I did note that we're going to start checking out some of our techno library items once again. So we, we figure that we can handle those, just as we do other things, that we'll just keep them for 72 hours, let them return and then finish checking them in. So we're also going to start checking out the guitars and ukuleles and board games and all those kinds of things again. So when you're coming, hopefully that will be useful to some folks who are stuck at home or looking for something new to do with their kids or to learn themselves. We'll be doing that. In terms of the supervisory training that I referenced in the report, working with Scott Community College, they have reduced their costs enough for us. Apparently there's another grant money that they can use to supplement this since we are all city government employees together. So we should be able to pay for the full 10-session trainings that they have in this particular package of training that they have for supervisors. It's really kind of aimed at entry-level supervisors, so that should be really good for us. I had an error in the date for when voting, recertification voting for the bargaining unit ends, so that's October 27th, so they have another week to go on that. The chat service, I just looked at the statistics, we're breaking down, we've been doing about 15 chats per week, so I think that that's pretty good. We're just kind of putting something on the website and seeing what happens. So that looks like that's being used. Our overall circulation, as expected, continues to trend lower as we look month over month to month. But September of 2020 was only 25% below what we did in 2019. Remember 2019, so I think that that's actually really pretty good. If your current is Eastern is actually our business location in terms of the materials checked out. And then right now, we are working through all the details of the proclamation from the mayor that was issued yesterday in terms of the mask requirement for our patrons and staff. And what does that look like and how are we going to enforce it? I know the police don't want to hear from us and it kind of somebody says they don't wear masks. So we're working through some steps for staff to take so that hopefully we can get compliance with that and getting all work out without any kind of particular issues. But I did, so I sent that information to the police about the steps that we plan to take, you know, we're going to ask and then we'll need to ask the person to leave and we can, we have a sheet of information we created that outlines the services that people can use without coming in the library. So the curbside service, the drive-up service, ebooks, the online chat service, you know, use the phone and call, all those kinds of things. And then if somebody still won't leave, we're going to tell them that if they won't, we're going to ban them for a month. And if they still won't, then we're going to ban them for the month. And if they still won't leave, we're going to let them know that if we need to call the police, have them removed, then there's going to be a six-month trespass. And hopefully that will convince people to just lock up the door and say that it's not worth it. But if we have to, we will. For some places with that. So hopefully we won't get there and people will be compliant. So far this morning, the biggest issue we had is that people will wear the face covering when they come in the door and then they take it off. So we had to remind a couple people that just apply when you walk in the door, it's when you're in the building the whole time. And then the other thing is people like to wear them down around their chance. So, or not covering their nose. So we've been having to kind of go around and say, no, that needs to be up over your nose. So, so we'll see how that all works out and I think that's, I think that's it unless I have any particular questions.
Watch the chat service. Are they interrupting or questioning?
Well, you know, yeah, I can't tell you. I just look at that. I know that how they interact. So on the library website and on our online catalog and on this, the screen that comes up when people log into our public computers is just a little widget over on the side that says live chat. And if you move your mouse by there, whatever pops up and says, how can we help you today? Or something like that. And people can answer their question. Oh, I think it's probably, it could be simple things like what are your hours? How do, how do I do this? I can't find this particular item. So if somebody's searching in the catalog and they, and they're trying to log in and they can't get logged in, there's a hole, they can't find the item that they want. I can't tell you for sure of these questions because I didn't tell them the reports that far.
This is Marion. I had a thought. The library obviously is being well-used and you're having, you know, lots of activity. With all the changes and that we're heading in now to winter, school is back in, you know, all this stuff, would it be worth your time to maybe, and I don't know if you have to go through, if you guys can decide to do your own news conferences or whatever, but maybe a sort of a news conference that says, hey, this is what we're doing, this is how we're operating and then, and then maybe send, and get the, get the media there because I think people are interested in the amount of things that are going on. And then maybe send them somewhere on your website that sort of recaps, okay, this is how business is done because it's very intricate at this point. And, and you know, we're kind of at a turning point with the masks, which I know right now it's only until November 30th, but maybe it would be a good thing to, to do something like that and just say, hey, we're still open for business, we're doing all these things virtually. Because you've really made a lot of accommodations, but people might not really be aware of that. And it might be a good time as we're going into the change of the season to say, we're here, we're doing this stuff, here's how we can help you, things like that. Just a thought.
And I know Brittany is going to be living local in sometime in the next two weeks and that's something we could also talk about is, you know, we're open and we have to welcome you, but these are the research places. Thanks Marion.
Hey Amy. This is Amanda, I just had a quick question. You may have just covered this, I'm sorry, I'm kind of doing two things at once here. But on your director report, it was talking about the supervisor training. I was just wondering what that kind of consists of.
Oh, it's, you know, like what is the role of the supervisor? Coaching? Leadership? Doing evaluations? Setting goals? Jennifer Lexie, help me out here.
I was just, is this a new training or is this something they've done previously?
We've not done it previously in this manner. So this is through Scott Community College, through a training program that they have. So some of this is already, it's already put together as a series that they do for, for students. But we'll be able to get it specifically for our, for our supervisors and that instructor will just work with our supervisors. Again, of course.
Sorry, I was trying to answer and I didn't realize I was still on mute. Some of the other topics were about communicating effectively, teamwork, motivating and engaging employees, that sort of thing.
Okay, great. That sounds wonderful. Thank you for explaining.
Okay. Next item on the agenda under communications and reports is reports from our council. Marion, anything else there?
Thank you. Thank you. Good to see you guys today. So probably top of mind right now are, the, the city did announce yesterday, new guidelines, which I can't all quote here, but basically in city-owned buildings, masks are required. People working, I guess if they're not at their desk, they need to be wearing one. People coming in need to be wearing one. The, the meetings, the city council meetings will be limited to 10 guests and there'll be five people from the council there and five people remote. So it'll be split meetings and that will rotate and I guess in terms of who's there and who isn't. And this is all in response to, you know, the increased, I guess, I don't really know. I didn't ask, I just said, yes ma'am, you know, we'll do this. But the increased, you know, number of cases. Again, it's very difficult to do this citywide without a national, a statewide mandate. So, but we're controlling what we can control, I guess. So that was announced yesterday. I guess that does affect the library and I guess, Amy, that's what you were talking about. So there are, our meeting with the board has, the board of trustees has been canceled for this week. It will be rescheduled. I'm sure there's other meetings. We've been through October doing a series of meetings as we go through budgeting, sort of looking at different parts of government and how they function and what they do. And we got through those meetings thankfully before this happened, but we've had, we had a number of meetings scheduled through October with various entities, whether it's the library, the downtown partnership, additional meetings to our regular management update meetings. And those are right now in flux, I think, is the best way to put it. So, you know, we will, I'm sure that will all be rescheduled and we'll figure that out. And I'm sure everybody's disappointed not to be able to meeting, be meeting this week with, with the board of trustees. The biggest thing probably on the agenda right now is the sale of the heritage. This has been the sale of the city-owned public housing. It's been something that's really been ongoing for over a year and really began in earnest this summer or this spring. There were significant offers and, and the, we have the heritage, which is a high-rise housing, and then we have scattered site. My gut was that it wouldn't be the same buyer because it's a kind of a different business. And that turned out to be the case. And so the heritage right now in front of city council is the public hearing for the sale of the heritage. We got many offers in great range of prices. And so that is, that comes this week before city council, the public hearing. And that's probably the biggest thing right now that we're dealing with. And then the, the scattered site, just for people who are interested, will follow in a different manner. Some of the local housing agencies have expressed an interest in purchasing those scattered site properties, which should be great. And so we will see how that rolls out. All of this is going to take, because there's all kinds of restrictions about sale and it takes a very long time to finish and will probably all not be done until the spring. So people living in public housing have been, they darn it, they, they will be retained. If in some cases with the scattered site, because we don't know who's buying them, if an agency that serves a particular population, for instance, can't, you know, wants that population, if it's someone, say, who deals with people with mental illness and that's their target, the city would provide a voucher or we'd be, HUD would provide a section eight voucher and we would, the city would be providing moving expenses and relocation costs and things like that. So, so that's all to be figured out, but, but we have told folks that we also offered people in the scattered site housing, the option to purchase first. And we did have a little interest in that. So some of the housing is, is single-family homes. So they were actually offered, we offered to sell to them first before any of this other happened. Last, two weeks ago, the Davenport Commercial Historic District, which includes the library, was officially placed in the National Register. And so it is done, done, done. It's all finished, it's all approved and we're there. And that was as of early September. Now, what that means is a large number of buildings that, some were listed, already listed in the National Register, but some were not. And it would have required everyone do a complicated National Register nomination, which is very expensive to, in order to gain historic tax credits. So these contributing buildings are now all potentially eligible for state and federal historic tax credits. So that's a huge benefit to someone looking, you know, to rehab some of these older buildings. There are of course requirements that go with that. And this is, this was done by the downtown partnership, they paid for it. This is the second historic district downtown that was added to the ones we already had. So a huge amount of our downtown now is our, our National Register Historic Districts, which is kind of exciting. Finally, the census wrapped up, that our Supreme Court in its infinite wisdom decided it was okay to end it two weeks early. And so it ended October 15th instead of October 31st. There were lawsuits that propelled it past the September 30th cutoff, which had, which had started, you know, there were lawsuits filed by cities and states. And so we got an extra few weeks. The library was a very good location in the last days of the census. We had census workers and they were, you guys were very gracious to allow them there. So we had census workers doing enumeration in the libraries. The city bought Whitey's gift cards and so everybody who did a census got a, got a gift card. And we, that started as a one-day thing and the census was interested in those last days and really continuing that. And so we just continued, we had more, we had more, had gotten more gift cards than we gave away. So we continued to do that and that was at the downtown library and at Fairmont. So thank you for your assistance in that. And hopefully we, you know, got some more people done. Iowa, at the last thing I saw online was 101% counted, which isn't possible. So, but it was a rounding error, I think. But what was nice was people kept self responding. I tracked this every day the last few weeks. I was doing it, I was doing it weekly before, but I did it every day. And they were, people were self, continuing to self respond in our census tracks up through the very last day that they could. So again, I want to thank the library for its leadership throughout this whole year. It's been a whole year that we were working on this and the library was there front and center from the get-go. So I wanted to thank you for that. And that's everything I have unless anybody has any questions of me.
Are there any questions for Marion?
We're just glad.
I have a question for Marion.
Yeah Sylvia.
Marion, has it been discussed or is it possible that Davenport have a citywide mask ordinance? I mean, there's other cities in the world that have done this and I think Iowa City, for example, and certainly other cities around the country.
The question comes to whether, if it's not mandated by the state, it's almost unenforceable. So it's, it's, and that's been the problem. I know some cities have, Dubuque, Des Moines, Iowa City, this, there is a feeling, but it's completely unenforceable because our governor hasn't said you have to wear a mask.
I know, but even if the government, the governor did, how is it any more enforceable? I mean, if you're making.
Well, you have, you have a little more strength of law. I mean, the state, the, the state attorney general weighed in on this back when, I'm sorry, this phone is ringing. Back when Musketeen proposed it, he weighed in and said, it's not legal. And he is no friend necessarily of, it's not, you know, he's a lockstep, you know, he's pretty independent, our state attorney general. And so there, there isn't, it's maybe a nice thing to do, but if you can, a law that you can enforce is a really bad law. You know, it's very, very difficult. So that makes it, that makes it much more difficult. I think if, you know, I'm in favor of it. I think that if our governor would, you know, do, you know, would step forward, then it would be much easier to push for it from a city standpoint. And I think you'd see a lot more cities, but.
Okay, thanks.
Question.
Stephen?
Oh, I just wanted to say I'm glad you're doing well, Marion.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I had a, I had a, a pretty mild case and I'm grateful for that. I have a neighbor who's in really tough shape right now that I wasn't in contact with, but you know, so it can, so I'm really, you know, it, I'm very thankful for that. And I know that it doesn't, you know, it could have been an other way. So anyway, I'm, I'm getting, I am, I did take the antibody test yesterday. Very curious to see if I have antibodies. So I'm gonna, I took that yesterday, so I'll find that out in a couple of days. But, but thank you for that.
Marion, I just, but this is Malavika. I just wanted to let you know that the post that city was making with the census and then even Davenport Public was making with the cards and things like that, SAU library would share it. And we got questions from people on our social media if they could go down to the library and do it and things like that. So there was quite a bit of activity. I mean, I don't know how we went, but I was happy to see that people were watching it and maybe a few went too. So thank you. Thank you for that.
Yes, thanks for all your help too, Malavika. Malavika was on our census committee as well, sign a great member.
Any other questions? Okay, that, move on to new business. First item on the new business is a discussion regarding the possibility of a St. Ambrose Masters of Social Work student serving as an intern at the library. And for that, we have a presentation from Jennifer Bodiker and Katie Van Blair. And we appreciate you being with us and being patient with us as we work through our meeting here. Welcome.
Hi, everybody. I'm Katie Van Blair. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I'm Katie Van Blair. I'm the director of the School of Social Work and I just want to thank you for giving us a little time to talk with you about the possibility of connecting with Davenport Libraries on a school, not a school, but a social work intern. Thanks to Malavika for connecting us with all of you. Just a teeny introduction to the School of Social Work at St. Ambrose. You know, St. Ambrose has about 3,000 students total. The School of Social Work has about 125, 12 faculty and staff. And so we've got placements, Jen Bodiker, the director of field, who will talk here in a minute, has a better sense of this, but we've got placements all over Iowa and Illinois in lots of different settings. But I've been coveting the library placements that my colleagues around the country have been talking about for years because I just really think that social workers and librarians are cousins of some sort. And so if there's a way for us to figure out just how to better serve our community this way and also serve as a learning opportunity for our students, we really, really appreciate the opportunity to talk to you about it. So thank you very much.
Thanks so much, Katie. I was going to share my screen as well. I have a presentation, a quick presentation I put together because I knew I wouldn't have a ton of time, but I at least wanted to kind of, just kind of share some information and really just get down to kind of the who, what, when, where, why, how of this conversation. So I'm going to go ahead and go to that. I just want to keep it short and quick, but just talk to you about this idea and really kind of propose it to see if there's a partnership that, that we could establish. And now is the time to really talk about it because when I talked to Malavika about it, it's really for next academic year. And we start planning a year in advance for our field placements for our students. So now is kind of the time and when she said there was a board meeting coming up, we were so lucky and I'm thankful to be on the, the meeting agenda today. So thank you for that. So the who is a master of social work student, specifically a generalist level student who's really learning to identify kind of that solid base of knowledge and skills of, of the social work profession. So really starting in their thinking and their intervention skill development. So really starting in their thinking and their intervention skill development and just starting at that, that baseline of working with individuals, families, groups, organizations, communities. And, you know, like Katie said, we just think of that library location and how it really has all of that all in one place. So we know that it's kind of a trend nationwide and we want to be a part of that trend. So that's why we're talking to you today. So the who is that Master of Social Work student, the what? It's called many things. The easiest, most identifiable thing is internship. That's what most people understand it as. We call it a field placement or a field practicum. But it is kind of that internship. That's the, the word that everyone kind of knows. But what it's doing is it's providing that student really an opportunity to take what they're learning in class and apply it in, in an agency or in a library or in a hospital setting, where they can really apply those knowledge and the values and the skills that they're learning in the classroom and then being able to practice that with the populations that they're working with. So the what is also our course competency. So we're not going to go too much into this, but just so you can kind of see why we see, like Katie said, this cousin relationship between a, a library and social, librarians and social workers is really kind of what we think the library could offer a student and what we could offer the library with our student. Because they're working on things like demonstrating their ethical and professional behavior and learning how to engage diversity and difference in practice. How do they engage in policy practice? How do they engage with individuals and communities? And how do you, how do they assess what's going on and intervene? So you guys were talking about some things that you're seeing in the library. You know, the student could be there seeing those things and thinking of ideas of, is it a presentation? Is it a, doing something on social media? Is it, you know, that type of stuff, right? How do we intervene? How do we then evaluate? Is it working? Is it not working? So these course competencies is really what that student is learning in the classroom and then would be going, you know, into the community to practice these skills and would really focus on. So the when, I kind of started to talk about that as well. The when is, it's an academic year placement. So it would start at the end of August and go through May the following year. So August 2021 to May 2022. There would be a little bit of a break between that fall semester and the spring semester. Students have to complete a total of 512 hours. So 16 hours per week, both in that fall semester and that spring semester. So that's also the nice thing, you know, in social work education, you either see an academic year placement or a block placement. The block placement would only be a semester. So, you know, by the time a student gets in, they're getting ready to leave. So we really like the academic year, that a student has more opportunities for learning, more opportunities for engaging in, in that community and that agency or the library that they're, they're placed at to really get more relationship set and more opportunities for learning and projects that they can work on. And the when is kind of now, since like I said, we start planning a year in advance. So right now, I'm starting to identify, you know, like the library or other agencies that we're not working with that would be wonderful sites and starting the conversation to see if it's a partnership that can, that we can have and, and to really have a student interview once we start the, the placement process, which starts in January. So the where, I have these beautiful pictures of the, the different branches of the library, but we're really hoping the where could be the, the Davenport Public Library. You know, even talking to Malavika, you know, the where is really where, you know, again, if we have this partnership, that we would be able to determine that together. Where would be the best location? Would it be all three that the student has time at? Is it focusing on just one? That's the exciting thing, is that we get to kind of decide and build that based on your need or based on what you see would be great opportunities for the student. But I at least thought I'd put the where of the beautiful locations there that I'm, I'm hopeful for. The why, as we, we talked about, you know, we're seeing this trend of, of social workers in a library setting. So that's the other nice thing, is that we have a lot of data and articles and research of, and just actually, you know, just information of social workers that have been in these sites and what have they been doing, what works, what doesn't work. It might be, you know, specific to their population, where they're, where they're at, bigger cities or smaller cities. But there's a lot of information, even me just getting ready for this short presentation today. I was diving in and in and in and I had to stop myself because this presentation would have been an hour. But it was just really exciting to see examples from social workers in libraries of what they're helping with and what they're assisting with. And so that was, you know, what I included on this slide here from the library, social work separating fact from fiction article. They just talked about how they assist patrons with life management questions and really helping them to find solutions to, to meet, to unmet needs, basic needs. So things like financial, affordable housing, emergency shelter, you know, the transportation, the mental health services. But also beyond that is building the community networks and providing crisis intervention. And I know here in the Quad Cities, you know, we have the QCon Hub that is, you know, forming and, and really in their phases. And again, I think that is an opportunity as well. You know, as that gets to the library phase of, of kind of, again, building that community networks and also the connection of the community to those agencies. If those people, if we have people coming through the library to try and find that information, that we have a better transfer to those agencies. So the why as well, you know, I, I was just doing some research for this presentation to see, you know, kind of where are we at? How many, you know, places are really, you know, looking at and having social workers in libraries? So this is just a map of MSW interns in libraries across the US. There is one in Iowa. And so again, it's nice to see, you know, where we're seeing them and being able to gather data from those places. And that's the other nice thing, is there's a website that actually shows all of these places and then what's worked, what hasn't, assessments that they've used, projects that the students have done to, again, give us something for ideas. And then this is just identifying actual social workers in libraries. So again, moving from just having that MSW intern and libraries that have hired an actual social worker. So the different colors are based on interns are blue. The blue, or sorry, the purple and the yellow are more like part-time and full-time social workers. But again, seeing this trend. And then the how. So the who, what, when, where, why, how, this is the, the end, right? The, the most important part. So the how is just that the, you know, the willingness of the library. If you guys would be, you know, willing and able to provide a student with this diverse and really appropriate learning activities to support that student development, which I showed you. I really feel like those competencies would really match well with a library setting and the populations that you're having come in and the needs that are there. And being able, you know, the library to provide a field, what we call a field instructor. So somebody that would serve as a supervisor for that student at the agent or at the library. We would provide an MSW supervisor that would provide one hour of supervision a week to kind of focus more on the social work side. But really having someone at the library that knows the library, knows the population, knows the needs, that would really be there to support the student. And the last two pieces are really, once we get to that point and, and understand if the partnership is there and we can do this, then the next two big pieces would be an affiliation agreement. So we are required to have affiliation agreement with all of our sites. So that would be between the library and St. Ambrose. And then lastly, we have all of our students interview for their field placement. So it's a great opportunity for them to build their professional skills of interviewing and applying. So you guys would have the opportunity to interview any potential students that are interested. And then the, after the interviews, I meet with both the site and the student to see if it's a good match. So that's also something that sites really like, is that you get to interview the student and ultimately say that, yes, this would be a good match or, you know, maybe someone would be a better match. So that is my really, really, really quick who, what, when, where, why, how to give you kind of the basic information and the excitement from our side, just to at least kind of start the conversation, to see if this would be possible. I have my references there. And then I just wanted to be quiet for a minute and see if anybody has any questions.
Questions?
Would this be considered a paid internship?
So it totally depends on the site. We have some sites that are able to provide internship, but not all. It is not a requirement and students don't expect it to be paid. Is it nice if it's paid? Absolutely. It helps the student out. But that is not something that you have to provide to be able to provide a field placement. So thank you for asking that question.
And unfortunately, it's nothing that we can provide from St. Ambrose either in terms of payment.
Yeah.
Any other questions, comments?
I think, I think it sounds like, wouldn't it be, we should have to look into it.
Great.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I have your contact information so I can get in touch with you and talk about other more specific requirements and what things might apply.
Great. And I think that's Amy. Is that Amy?
Yeah.
Great, great.
This is Sylvia. And I, I think it just fits in so well with our mission, you know, connecting a diverse population to resources that inform and educate and probably maybe uplift is in there. I'm not sure. But I, I think it's, because that would be, you know, like, oh wait, it's a great idea, but is it our mission? And I think, to me, it fits very well with our mission.
Great, that's one question here.
Thank you, Sylvia.
Okay. I guess I would just like to kind of second Sylvia's comments. Because I think it, it seems like so much of what you're talking about fits so well with what we do. But I'll defer to the Director in that we have to look at all the logistics of this. We have to be concerned about, for example, union contracts and all of that. So obviously, this will be an ongoing discussion.
And this is why we start now. Because there's a lot of working pieces, you know, when we do talk to new sites. And so that is absolutely, again, why we proactively plan to be able to identify all those kind of pieces to get to that point.
Steve, I would just like to say, Jennifer, Katie, thank you so very much. You know, it was excellent to, you know, talk to both of you. And so thank you for coming today.
Yes, and thank you for having us.
Thank you.
Pass on my thanks also. And you just say that I also volunteer for the Volunteer Income Tax Assistance Program. Apparently, honestly, we've had some of your students there help out. We appreciate that.
Wonderful.
Okay. There are no other questions or comments? Thank you very much.
Thanks so much. It was a good presentation, very clear and brief.
That's what I was hoping, because I could talk for hours. Trust me, I love field and I love this idea of library social work.
Right.
I gotta keep myself on a who, what, when, where, why, how. I gotta keep.
You were, you were very disciplined and we thank you.
Thank you so much. Bye.
Thanks, everybody.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is a motion to accept the bid from the contractor for the main library renovation project. And before we get a motion, tell us anything about that in.
Sure. So the, the low bidder is Swanson Construction. Their bid was $660,480, which is very favorable. About, probably about $500,000 less than what we expected. So that is really wonderful for us in terms of our fundraising. And so we know that we have plenty of money raised now to complete the project. And some of the things that we didn't think we were going to be able to do right away, like work on relighting the exterior of the building, those are looking like they will be possible. So, so we're really happy with that. The architect from Ligon that we've been working with, he called the person from Swanson to talk with them about the project. He really kind of wanted to make sure that they really knew what they were doing, that they really understood the project, so that we weren't going to get any surprises. Where they would say, oh, well, we didn't understand that piece of it. He said he was very knowledgeable about the project and appeared to have the entire scope over covered. The only thing he pointed out was the lead time for the, there'll be some decorative panels on the front sides of our new service desk. And fabrication for those is, is pretty long, so it's pretty long lead time on that so that they both agree the desk could be constructed and installed and then we'll put those decorative panels in later, about three or four months later when we're ready. And he said his first and last question to Tom from Swanson was, "Are you comfortable with your bid?" And both responses were yes. Kristi Keller from City Purchasing also indicated that the city has not had any issues with Swanson projects in the past. So there are no red flags there. So I think we need the motion to be slightly amended to indicate that the bid would be from Swanson Construction for $660,480. They local? Yes.
Were you surprised the person over there? Were you talking to any people?
Yeah, and so there were, I think, six bids received. The high was 880. The next closest bid was $672,000. So, and then the next one after that was like $690 or something like that. So there were, there were a number of bids right in that area. So, so it's not like it was an outlier in the only one.
I vote to accept the bid from Swanson for the main library renovation project. We, we just add the amount to there, $660,480?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. So thank you, Tom, for the motion. And we have a second from Craig. Is there any further discussion?
Do they have a time limit for this project?
So we'll be working with timeline as soon as we have the contractor in place. There is a, we're looking at like three to four months maximum, once they get started. So we know that there's going to be a little bit of lag time before they get started as they get materials in. There'll be tile and things like that, carpet, that they need to, to order. So we will, we'll have more details about that. But then if they don't meet the timeline as projected, there is liquidated damages of $250 a day on the project as well. So, and in terms of when the main library will be closed. Talking before we make those decisions. And we might not get a whole ton of warning, you know, because we don't want to pull something up. So hopefully, we'll, we'll know pretty quickly. And we can get our patrons plenty of warning, but hopefully, it's a couple of weeks before we do that. The projected closing time is, I, I think the architect thinks that they can do it theoretically in four weeks. That sounds really short to me because there are going to be, you know, taking down, you know, the walls and things like that. So I would say we'd be looking at six to eight weeks. Because we don't want to say we're going to open and then not open. So it would be better to say we're going to be closed for eight weeks and then open on Saturday.
Managing expectation.
Yeah, managing expectation, definitely.
Okay. Any further discussion, questions? Okay. Now I'll call for the vote on the motion to accept the bid from Swanson Construction in the amount of $660,480 for the main library renovation project. Call for the vote. Craig?
Yeah.
Thank you. Judy?
Yes.
Thank you. Sylvia?
Yes.
Thank you. Tom?
Yes.
Maggie?
Yes.
Thank you. Joe?
Yes.
Thank you. Malavika?
Yes.
And my own vote is yes. Motion carries. Thank you.
Amanda?
Oh, I'm sorry. Amanda? Once again, motion carries. I'm not to do that again. The next item on the agenda is a motion to accept the bid for the library furnishings. All the information for that was not received in time. Still, they're still working on that. So I entertain a motion to table that until the next meeting. So, thank you, Tom. Is there a second? Do we have a motion and a second to table, excuse me, to table the item to accept the bid for the main library furnishings? I'll call for the vote. Judy?
Yes.
Sylvia?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Maggie?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Malavika?
Yes.
Amanda? Thank you. Craig?
Yeah.
Thank you. And my own vote is yes. Motion carries.
Don, on that subject, I will say that, so those bids just were, that bid closed at 2:00 yesterday afternoon. So the interior designer for Leggett is looking at the low bid to make sure that the furnishings that they did actually meet the design intent, you know, so that we don't end up with colonial-style furniture in our business reminded building. That would be a bad thing. And that they also, if they have substitutions, that they're also meeting the policies back. So that takes quite a lot of evaluation on their part, so that's, she just didn't have a chance to get that done. So there's the possibility we might call a quick special meeting for that approval, so we can get that on order, because for some things, there's going to be quite a long lead time.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda is a motion to approve the library CIP requests for fiscal year, years 22 through 27, and library general operating budget for fiscal year 22. We have a motion. So I'll move, thank you, Tom, is there a second?
Again.
Thank you, Judy. We have a motion and a second to approve the library CIP requests for fiscal year 22 through 27, and the library general operating budget request for fiscal year 22. Anything to comment on that, Amy?
So sure, the requests that are new this year are to get replacement of the Eastern Avenue branch roof and in the pipeline out in the future. So because we know it generally takes quite some period of time before, like, you know, if we want something done, and, you know, say in five years, we need to get it on the budget now, so that there's a plan for it, there's probably a strong possibility that this won't be funded in all this year, and it will get pushed out. But we need to start having a discussion and start planning for that. The other one that's new, and I don't know what its fate will be, because we put it in for fiscal '23, which will be the main library exterior painting. Just this past year, it's kind of gotten pretty obvious that a lot of the paint is starting to really kind of peel off the exterior of the building. It was less painted in 2008. And I think, you know, when they did that, it was a super low-budget operation. Like, we contracted, we worked with city facilities maintenance and, you know, contracted with somebody to power wash the building, and then they bought the paint from someplace or other and contracted with somebody to, you know, bring the paint on. So I'm not sure that we got perhaps the quality exactly that we needed, but it was a really low-cost option at the time.
So. Browsing time is limited to 30 minutes. Please check out your items within this time limit. Browsing time is limited to 30 minutes.
We haven't really noticed that the paint is burning, but it took a lot, quite a lot on some side of the building. So we will see about that. Otherwise, if these projects are all things that were, that you saw last year, they're simply moved up a year. So we're that another year closer, and then on the backside of that sheet, you'll notice our two ongoing programs, which are the library materials and our equipment.
Just commented one item on there for the Paramount branch roof replacement. That's a spot we've had some difficulties with over the years, so hopefully, when we get to that, we won't have to worry about it.
Yeah.
Okay.
The, I should say, so the operating budget is basically flat from last year. And this is not how it looks when Casey submits it, so she translated it into the budget that you normally see. So, Marion, if you look at this, it won't look like anything like the budget that you see when you look for city hall things. But this is just kind of a way to translate that some of those areas are composed and things like that. They group things together to have it make a little bit more sense. So basically, those numbers are all flat. Where the things that we really don't know about are the general wage increase for salaries, because that's all part of the union negotiations, and then what the benefits cost is going to be. So again, that's all, that all comes to us from the city, just based on the number of staff that we have, so. So that's the request that Casey's probably about to get sent up in terms of getting, working with the city regarding the process for fiscal '22.
So the library certification vote is going on right now?
That's with the union.
So does that have any impact on what you just said about?
It does, in that if the union does not vote to recertify, I'm not really sure what the process is going to be in terms of determining what the general wage increase is for fiscal '22. I would imagine it would be fairly similar to what the other bargaining units negotiate for, but we'll have to see. So if, so if they do vote to recertify, which I really fully expected they will, a vast majority of public unions across the state have voted to recertify. It's only been a very, very small number that haven't. So again, then the union negotiations will be there.
Thank you. Is there any other comments or discussion?
Would you define CIP, please?
Posture, capital improvement.
Any other questions, comments on these budgets? If not, I'll call for the vote. Sylvia?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Maggie?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Malavika?
Yes.
Amanda? I'm sorry, let's look, did I get a thumb up?
Can't hear you.
Amanda? Oh, can't hear you. Give me a thumbs up if it's a yes. Thank you. Okay, Amanda, Craig?
Yeah.
Judy?
Yes.
And my own vote is yes, motion carries. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is a motion to approve changes to the library COVID-19 quarantine policy to be placed in the library personnel manual. Entertained a motion and every word?
Will move.
Thank you, Joe, is there a second? Thank you, Maggie. Have a motion and a second to approve changes to the library COVID-19 quarantine policy to be placed in the library personnel manual. Any discussion on this item?
Right, could I just ask, I presume this was developed in conjunction with the city's HR department?
Yes, so, but in part, it's a little bit different and a part that we added in. So this was, to my recollection, previously kind of approved and a lot of this is procedural for how to work handling COVID-19. It's really the quarantine protocol that we're looking at, especially since the governor has changed some of that in terms of the tools. We feel pretty strongly that if somebody has close contact with somebody who tests positive, we like, we really want to lean more towards the CDC guidelines, which says that whether or not that person has a mask on during that close contact, that you're going to have this quarantine. So this policy, this is from Iowa Department of Public Health, and I did, for those who are here, I did printout that sheet. It covers that. I think the key here is that close contacts have to be wearing face tarers consistently and correctly. And I know that sometimes people have face tarers on, perhaps not necessarily be correctly worn. We were really looking to err more on the side of conservative in terms of when we ask staff members to quarantine. And because we really don't want it to get spread around the library, and we also really don't want to have our staff spread into patients. So we certainly don't want to get our patrons sick and just really want to, you know, like, if they air on, air on the side of conservative, we have that. So this policy is a little more strict in terms of staff exposure than what City Hall is doing right now. I, so I did check with city HR and things like that, and they are okay with that, because we are not police and fire, and we're not picking up trash and things like that, and they're essential workers. And, you know, honesty, at our facilities here, we have a little bit more trouble doing some of the socialisms. We have so many shared workstations, we have cubicle areas that even though people are sitting apart, you know, it's, I think it's just a little bit more problematic, even though we try to separate people out as much as we can. So we just want to, really want to do what we can to make sure that we don't kind of get an outbreak here at the library, and that we really don't disspread it to any of our library users.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on the motion to approve changes to the library COVID-19 quarantine policy? No question, everybody wants to say that.
No.
Obviously, you're a lot.
Yes, so we provide the, no, we don't have our library masks on today. So we did provide two at the clock, masks that are, that are leveraged by the ones that have a logo on them. It's, we might have seen anywhere before. But that's only two, and we know that people need to wash them and things like that. So we do let people wear, you know, bring their own as long as they are within library dress code. So I'm afraid that yours, Craig, would not be permitted.
Okay, I see that.
So if you can't wear it on your shirt, then you can't wear it on your face.
Any other discussion? Okay, now I'll call for the vote of the motion to approve changes to the library COVID-19 quarantine policy to be placed in the library personnel manual. Tom?
Yes.
Maggie?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Malavika?
Yes.
Amanda? Okay, thank you. Craig?
Yes?
Sylvia?
Yes.
And my own vote is yes, thank you. Motion passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda is discussion on the 2021 strategic plan implementation plan.
Yeah, so if you have a chance to read through here, I just want to point out a few of the things that are new for this year. So, and you'll notice that some things have dropped off. So strategies one and two, we've completed, or they are no longer relevant. So strategy one was to increase the library hours. So that we've done, so we are now open till eight o'clock at night, Monday, Thursday, and operate our locations. And then strategy two for that was looking at ways to have the meeting rooms open if we couldn't extend our hours. So that's why some of these things have dropped off. The other things that have really been added are things that, especially during COVID-19, we really kind of realized in terms of, we need strategies to communicate with our patrons and don't rely on the internet. Though, because we have a significant number of patrons who don't have easy access to that. So, for example, we, when we reopened, and we realized that we really had not effectively been able to communicate that to a fair number of our patrons, we sent out postcards and hit the neighborhoods, you know, all around the branches and things like that, to let people know, you know, that we were open and things like that. So we know that that's going to be an ongoing, an ongoing thing for us to do. In terms of other things that got added, the supervisors can, some of the new courses, Jimmy talked about earlier, there was my report to, yeah, increase their level of situational skills. Who would like the staff to have a staffed in-service team that would be responsible for a couple hours of the staff in-service upcoming, so that they can program that and figure out what that is. Don't ask me when we're going to have our in-service, I don't really have any idea how we're going to do that. We are also looking to identify specific community groups that are disproportionately impacted by COVID-19 in terms of job loss, challenges with housing, all those kinds of things, to see what types of services we might be able to offer them. Some of that will be sort of post-pandemic. I don't know that any of us think that all the jobs that have been lost are going to come back. So unemployment will continue to be a challenge for a lot of folks as well. So even, even after, you know, restaurants and bars and all those kinds of things can reopen again. We will be working on having the library join actively the, the Open Network Hub, as Vodiver mentioned. So that will happen this year to connect our patrons to things with the renovation. And especially, we have been looking to what we can do with the landscaping around the building. We know that as we drive on Forest Street, the south, the north side of the building just doesn't look, excuse me, very inviting. So we're hoping to do something with that, and the way the bids have come in, we might be able to actually do more than what we had anticipated. Just to have that street view look good. And then in terms of the kids working with early literacy, we were really looking for a program that would be something that would be, that we could do during the pandemic, or we could do after pandemic, or we could modify as needed as, you know, COVID-19 cases come and go. So what we're looking at doing is the program called the Thousand Books Before Kindergarten. And it's really a nationwide program to encourage parents to read to their kids. And as they go along the way and reach certain milestones, there are different celebrations that we can have, different incentives that we can offer, and this is something that we can do whether or not COVID cases are really high. Even if the library gets shut down again, we can still offer materials, kids through, and families through the Drive Up curbside service. They can log all their reading virtually using the program that we purchased this summer, this reading program. And we have some sponsors that are potentially interested in helping us with those incentives and things like that. So that's, I think, where we're going to put a lot of our efforts for the early literacy, because it's just really not the right time to get all the libraries and the classes together to do something. Everybody's just got too much of their own stress that they're dealing with, but we wanted to do something, so this is what we're pushing and doing, and really creating that as a program that we hope is, and plan to be sustainable for the long haul. So then if a two-year-old starts, you know, and by the time they get kindergarten and they completed it, then, you know, they will really be ready to enter kindergarten and have a lot of those early literacy skills that they need. But those are kind of the highlights of what's changed this year.
Any discussion regarding the strategic plan implementation plan? Hearing is seen none, I'll call for the vote.
This was a discussion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So we'll prove that in our next meeting, and so, if you have any other questions, we can read through it. Just let us know.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, next item on the agenda is old business, that being the approval of the library sex offender policy. May I have a motion regarding that?
No.
Thank you, Judy, is there a second? Okay, thank you, Malavika. I have a motion and a second to approve the library sex offender policy, which we discussed at our last meeting. Is there any discussion now regarding the motion? Okay, hearing is seen none, I'll call for the vote. Okay, hearing you say none, I'll call for the vote. Maggie? Thank you. Joe?
Yes.
Thank you. Malavika?
Yes.
Thank you. Amanda? Thank you. Greg? Thank you. Judy?
Yes.
Thank you. Sylvia?
Yes.
Thank you. Tom?
Yes.
Thank you. And my own vote is yes, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is closed session for the purpose of the director's evaluation. In order to go into closed session, we'll have to, first of all, have a motion for that.
I think the Gavin Part Public Library Board of Trustees hold a closed session under section 21.5 I, in the Iowa Code, to evaluate professional competency of an individual whose employment, hiring, performance, or discharge is being considered when necessary to prevent needless and irreparable injury to that individual's reputation and that individual requests a closed session.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Joe. I have a motion and second to go into closed session for the purposes of the director's evaluation. And we'll note that Amy has requested that the meeting, the evaluation be held in closed session. So that requirement is met. And, uh, let's see. Okay, um, I guess we just mentioned that for Amanda and Sylvia, we will give you a call to set up the conference call. And I guess.
You're, you're going to call us?
Yes.
Okay, on my cell phone number, I assume?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, so with that, I will, is there any discussion of the motion? Okay, hearing you say none, I'll call for the vote. Maggie? Thank you. Joe?
Yes.
Thank you. Malavika?
Yes.
Thank you. Amanda? Okay, I hear you. Thank you. Craig? Thank you. Judy?
Yes.
Thank you. Sylvia?
Yes.
Thank you. Tom?
Yes.
Thank you. And my own vote is yes. So we will go into closed session. So, oh, I just wanted to mention also that typically, when we haven't been in the midst of the difficulties caused by that's things as the COVID-19 pandemic, we would, after the closed session, come back in to open the session to vote on the evaluation. Since that would require setting up an entirely separate public meeting being recorded for that sole purpose, we are going to hold off and actually approve the evaluation at our next meeting. So for anyone who's watching, I guess for the benefit of trustees and also for anyone who may be watching this, that's the line of protocol we will follow with this. And so if you're interested in that, come back for the next meeting. Okay, so we are going into closed session. Thank you, everyone.
I will see you guys.